Let us pray, please.
Let us pray. Dear most gracious and heavenly father, we come to you this evening seeking your guidance and your wisdom to help us through these trying times that we are experiencing in our country. Lord, we ask that you bless our leaders and guide our leaders to direct them to do the things that are necessary to make our country the best that it can possibly be for all that are here in our country. Lord, we ask that you bless this board as we begin to do the business for our school district. We ask that you bless those hurting, due to lost loved ones, those that are suffering or infirm. We ask that you reach out and if it be your will, that you place your healing hand upon them. Lord, we ask that you be with us as we do the business of the school district in the best interest of our children and our personnel in the district. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Call to curse your Kenneth School Board of Trustees, meeting to order. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Motion by Ms. Furnas, second by Mr. Cameron. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. That's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Properly motion by Dr. King, second by Ms. Furnas. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. And that's unanimous. No one signed up right. We want to thank each and every one for coming out this evening. I want to thank Mr. Martin for being with us this evening. So now it moves us down to our recognition and celebration. Dr. Goodwin.
Yes, we have both some student and staff recognitions tonight. And Dr. Smith, if you come forward and join me.
Dr. Goodwin, Dr. Smith, board. We'll start a recognized student. Has a team of athletes selected to participate. Twenty-sixth Special Olympics USA, Minneapolis, Minnesota, June twenty-fourth. Special education teacher and Special Olympics coach. Among the hundred. State chosen for this prestigious opportunity. All three student athletes will compete in the competitions. The Special Olympics USA Games is a unique opportunity for athletes to compete on a national stage and celebrate their achievements. We invite the community to rally behind these athletes and support Team South Carolina as they embark on this exciting journey. Congratulations. Come on. Big congratulations. Our next recognition tonight goes to North Central High School Activities Director and Head Football Coach Daniel Sisk. Please come forward. Coach Sisk was named the Region Ford Two A Athletic Director of the Year for 2025. This honor is voted on by members of the South Carolina Athletic Administrator Association. Region Athletic Directors of the Year are also nominated for Class Two A Athlete March at the Athletic Directors and Principals Conference. Congratulations, Coach Sisk. Thank you for all you do for the student athletes at North Central High School.
Under new and old business, we have both board policy for review. Becky, if you would come, please.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board. Is this working? Okay, okay. As a reminder, the policies we're bringing you tonight are for approval, and they're recommended by the School Boards Association related to legislation that was passed last session. First, the policies related to live streaming school board meetings. In response to the newly passed law, we are revising Policy BE, board meetings, and proposing a new policy, BEA, live streaming of board meetings. Under the new law, all school board meetings, whether regular, special called, or workshops, must be accessible via live stream. Executive sessions are exempt. As you know, we already live stream our meetings, so the only change that this will make for our school board will be that we'll begin live streaming finance and facilities meetings starting January first. So we are asking for approval of Policy BE revisions and new board policy BEA tonight.
The policy is properly before us. Motion made by Dr. King, second by Coach Blackman. Any discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, let it be known by raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Okay. The next policies that we're bringing you tonight are revisions to Policy JH, Student Absences and Excuses, revisions to JHR, Student Absences and Excuses, and a new policy, JHE, related to excused absences for career and technical student organization experiences. Lawmakers have formally authorized districts to excuse student absences up to ten days for participation in certain career and technical student organization activities. These are activities that are held on the state and national level for, like, example, Future Farmers of America and 4-H programs. Students and their parents or legal guardians are responsible for ensuring that all missed academic work is obtained and completed in accordance with school policy during these excused absences. So we are proposing adoption of the new policy and revisions to the existing policies in accordance with state law.
The policy is properly before us. Is there a motion? Properly motion by Coach Blackman, second by Ms. Ronlet. All those in a discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, let it be known by raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Okay. And finally, we are bringing revisions to Policy JFABC Transfer Students and JFABCE Inter-District Transfer Request Form. At the start of the 2025 legislative session, lawmakers been began considering changes to administration eligibility, funding, and oversight through the Education Scholarship Trust Fund. Because the Act directs the State Department of Education to develop regulations, guidance, and procedures for the transfers, we only have made changes to the athletic transfer portion of the policy as of now. The request to transfer and the request form at this time. However, it will be likely that we'll bring this back to you when the State Department makes the other changes to the policy, but we wanted to go ahead and get this part amended. So we are recommending approval tonight.
The policy is properly before us. Is there a motion? Properly motion by Mr. Cameron, second by Ms. Furnas. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, and that's unanimous. Thank you. On the chairman's report, I just want to remind us that the School Board Association, normally, we have the regional meetings. Our meeting for the Midland area is scheduled for October the 22nd. It's in the evening. If you would like to attend, please get in touch with Ms. Wendy, and she will sign you up. Dr. Goodwin.
Yes, tonight, we bring you two reports. We're going to bring you the 2425 Communication Summary Report. We're also going to bring you a report on the deferred maintenance projects that were done this past summer and bring you an update on those. So at this time, we'll ask Ms. Bean and Ms. Putnam if they'll come forward.
Tonight, we're going to bring you, like Dr. Goodwin said, the communications report for 2425. And we do this every year, and one of the first things we like to do at the beginning is just kind of give a thank you to all of our communications teams in the schools. And I think most of y'all know that we have three communications contacts in each of our schools, and we could not do our job without them because they really help us share the good news in the schools. We love to go out in the schools, and we try to do that as much as we can to see all the great things happening. But with as many schools as we have and other things that we have going on, it's it's hard. So we love to get those photos, news stories, and all to share with media from our school-level contacts. So we like to always start by thanking them. Each year, we hold a training for them at the beginning of the school year and just kind of go over some ideas, and they all share ideas with each other and learn a lot from each other, too. And so we also like to thank the board because y'all do approve each year a small stipend for these folks in the schools, and that's very important and appreciated by them. So we just wanted to start with that.
We wanted to talk about our district website. It didn't concern us. And one of the things we talk about real quickly as we share these numbers is there's no magic number we're trying to reach. We're not trying to, these are just kind of, it helps us watch the trends for what we're doing and making sure that we're being effective in the communications that we're sharing. So for our district website, this is everything that we share. So anytime we post, Becky writes a news story, and we share it, it always goes on our website first, and then wherever else we share it, it always links back to our district website. So even though it looks like the number had gone down slightly, you can see there were still over 10 million hits on our different pages on our website. So we definitely feel like our website is a core of what we're doing. On the next slide, our school websites, you can see that those are being used more this year. And this is our new platform. With it now, they're posting school news and individual stories there. And we always invite you to go look at those.
Next is our Blackboard Connect, and that's our system that we use for communicating with parents through text, phone calls, emails, mass emails. And that number stayed pretty flat, and that's normal. We did ask, and some of the schools asked their parents, do you want us to call? Do you want us to text? And so they're using some of that information to kind of try to communicate with parents how they best want to. And so I know a lot of parents, and I'm a parent in the district, too, when that number comes across, maybe in the middle of the day, it might cause a panic. And so some of the schools are doing maybe a little less calling, little more texting, or something like that. And so the number changes a little bit, but but I know the schools do a great job of communicating with the families using Blackboard. The next slide we have is Parent Portal. And Parent Portal is still the hub for report cards and where final grades and all go in. But you'll see on the next slide that we also use Canva, Canvas now. So that's the daily assignment. So whereas Parent Portal, you'll kind of get the grade, the final grade, and what they have, or during report cards or things like that. And it still is what goes into the system. We have seen, you'll see the next page where the numbers of Canvas are very high because that's kind of a daily thing, I think, that parents are checking on, all those assignments, and students as well. So the numbers stayed good there, and the average logins. But parents probably use Parent Portal, the Parent Portal, more than students. Canvas numbers are very high, as you can see, and that is students logging into Canvas to look at assignments and grades and all. And so we would definitely expect that to rise, and it has greatly this year with that 2.8 hits on that. So I think that's a good tool for parents and students to kind of stay on top of daily assignments and what teachers are putting out there, and exactly how much things count, and different things like that. So it's very helpful to see the detail in Canvas.
Facebook continues to be our major platform for social media. You can see that the posts have gone down slightly, the post hits, but the interactions have more than doubled. So we feel like we've got a lot more, you know, we've been working to try to have more engaging posts as well, you know, share your picture, share your share your story. So that's been helpful, and our followers continue to go up. Our school Facebooks, and on your printed copy, I left out a one, so it's actually 11,400, etc. The slide is correct. But so you can see Facebook for our schools as well is continuing to be a huge platform there. Next, we have our Instagram. Our district Instagram account continues to build slowly but surely. We are sharing a lot of information from our Facebook to our Instagram, and then sometimes post things differently on Instagram as well. And school Instagrams, honestly, the three high schools and Willard Technology Center are the bulk of our Instagram users because most of those are our high school students that are really engaging in those. But all of our schools have their Instagram pages and are sharing that information as well. Last, the next slide, I want to show you our social media feed. One of the things we really like is on our websites, at the bottom of every school website, the social media feeds into the website. So parents, the community members who go to, if I go to a specific school's website, if I go to Lou Gothelgen Middle School's website, I see their social media feed at the bottom of the page. I don't have to be logged into Facebook, so I'm not missing anything by having that there. But we do have this page that I've created on our website that has all the feeds from all the schools in one place. So if you ever want to go to that website and just see what are our schools putting on social media, you can see the latest, it always puts the latest ones at the top. And that's another way for our community to go. It's under our news link, and that's another way for our community to see it without having to have their own social media. So they're not missing anything that's being shared there.
Next is Peach Star, and you'll see our views stayed about the same, but a new thing that they added this year is they told us a total flyer. So we had 974 e-fliers sent last school year. And those are community events, school events, all that kind of thing. You know, if a high school is hosting an event and they want their feeder schools to see it, they can upload it to their feeder schools, and that comes directly to parents' emails. And we do that instead of handing out paper flyers and book bags. This helps the schools not get stacks of flyers from different organizations and all. And also, parents prefer it because it's right in their email. They can refer back to it. It's not wadded up in the book bag and all. And it also gives us a chance to, all of those flyers do come through my office, and I can approve them that way. And so we just have a set of eyes on them before they go out to the public. And there's required information for them. And once, once a group kind of gets the hang of it, they know exactly what has to be on there, you know, contact information and all that. And, and the people, obviously, they like using it. They've, we've approved 974. So it, sometimes it's a learning curve for people that still want that paper flyer, but once we describe it and show that it works, they kind of catch on and like that, too. Next is Smore, and Smore is a tool that our office offers to schools. It's not something they have to use, but it's something that we offer for their newsletters. And it's a, we like it. We use it for our district newsletter that we do every other month, and it's kind of a, you know, easy software to drag and drop things into. But one of the nice things about it is that it translates and different things like that. So it's a good tool that we provide. Looks like the numbers went down a little bit, and we, we're kind of going to look into that and see. I think some people are using maybe Canva and different things that they're more familiar with. So we'll So we'll just take a look at that and see. But we do, one of the reasons we prefer Smore is because it's accessible.
I have a duplicate. I think the next thing, looks like we had extra pages. Sorry about that. Yes, YouTube, here we go. So the next thing is YouTube, which we're live streaming on right now. So there are people actually watching it right now online. And so our numbers continue to go up. It continues to be a good, easy platform. It also feeds in the front of our website, so people can go to our website and see the live stream meeting there now. So we're continuing to build our subscribers to that platform. LinkedIn is a professional social media platform that's a great site for people who are job hunting. So we make sure that the stories and the information we're sharing there are specifically, you know, when we're hiring people and we have vacancies, when we have career fairs. And so we're continuing to build people there.
And next, we just wanted to take a minute to thank our partners in the community, the Chronicle Independent, Elgin News, the State, the Kershaw News Era. They all do a great job of helping us get the good news out in the community. And then also local news outlets. We're fortunate, several of the news outlets have people that are kind of concentrated on this area to share the good news to. On WLTX and all, we are always featured on Teacher of the Week and they definitely love to come to Kershaw and share our good news. So we are thankful for them and always, you know, we say when we help them, then when we, you know, they might need to come for a story that we're not happy about, but we have that relationship with them and so that's really, that's good.
We appreciate Cool102.7, which gives us spots on the radio station for, we do about a 90-second audio, excuse me, 75-second radio spots during football games. And so we've been able to spotlight many of the programs and the folks in our school district through that. So that's kind of a list of some of those that we've done. We also want to thank our communications partners. We have several people in our community who come out and take photographs either free or very inexpensively for our schools and do, again, do a lot of things that we just could not do. So we always appreciate their help and their support as well. We want to talk to you briefly about our school awards. SC-Enzbra is a professional organization in South Carolina that offers the Rewards for Excellence contest each year, which is an awards program that recognizes excellence in school communications. And so we had nine of our, nine awards for our school level winners. The Golden Achievement Award is a pretty big programmatic award for a major program that a school did. And so Lou Goff Elgin Middle School won that for their STEAM night. So that's a comprehensive program and that was great that they were able to be recognized for that. Next, we had several schools that won awards. And so we'll just briefly, Blaney Elementary School, Lou Goff Elgin High School, North Central Elementary School, North Central Middle School and Pine Tree Hill Elementary School were all recognized for some of their communications efforts. So that was great.
And as you probably remember, last year, SC-Enzbra came and recognized Dr. Goodwin as their Administrator of the Year for his excellence in communications and supporting communications in the district. And we definitely are thankful for that as well. And so he was recognized that. And then the next is district level awards. And each year, Julie does a great job. A lot of these things are, you know, her projects. So she gets recognized every year for a lot of great things that she kind of is in charge of in the district. And so that just kind of lists those. And again, we received three Golden Achievement Awards. And each year, we're always proud of that event. I know Dr. Goodwin likes to attend if he can because in a room full of districts from all over the state, Kershaw always has one of the strongest showings of school level and district level communications awards. And so we're proud of that and it's a nice time to recognize the work that they do in the schools.
The last thing we want to talk to you about is something you may or may not be aware of, which is our new chatbot that we have on our website. This is an AI chatbot. If you go to our website, it's in the very, very bottom corner. It's just a little gold kind of bubble with blue and you click on it and you can type in your question. It's 24-hour, seven-support. It is an AI tool, but it only works within our school district website. It does not pull any, anything from anywhere outside of our website. We've been working with the company to get that perfected. So we just kind of started it without making a big splash to get it started. We started it the first day of school and we've already had over 850 questions of the chatbot. I've got a list of the things, the top things, of course, registration, employment, power school codes. So a lot of things that people, parents, might have had to call the school district or call schools and ask. They get auto, they get automated answers with that and it'll link to where the content is on our website. We're monitoring that, you know, the first few days, it wasn't doing as great. So it's been learning and then we've been learning how to adjust some of our pages to make sure that we're fully able to answer that information. So it's continuing to evolve and we are planning to try to roll, to roll that out on all of our school pages, too. So at an individual school, it would only search their content. But we're giving them time now that we know how it's working to make sure that they are knowing, to make sure everything is up to date on their website. So it's another great thing we're able to do and we're excited about cutting down on some of the questions that families are getting and getting them answers very quickly. And with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions, but we sure appreciate your time and support.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. King.
Very quickly, just a word of praise. In this day and age, it's so easy and folks are sometimes so prone to only focus on the negative and put out what's not going good. I really appreciate our partners out there in the community with the media and especially you guys for focusing on the positive. Because we do have a lot of positivity and a lot of good things going on in our district every day and every school. So I appreciate you guys. Excellent job.
Well, Dr. King, thank you. I repeat, duplicate what he said. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Stole my thunder.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Next, Mr. Smith will come up and he'll give some highlights from our deferred maintenance projects this past summer. Some of those are not real exciting, you know. We paint a few halls in each school every year and some things like that. Those aren't as exciting as some of the other projects, but he's still got a pretty good list.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members. Dr. Goodwin, thank y'all for having me. Just real quick, kind of low down on deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance money is not general fund money. It's a different bucket of money. It's capital funds money. A lot of times, people don't understand, we may be having to tighten our belts in the schools and then we're going and we, you know, paved the parking lot. And why couldn't that gone into the classroom to help teachers get things for their students and principals for their teachers and that kind of thing? It's two different pots of money. And we've been, sometimes we may have no money, deferred maintenance. We've had that before. And we've had as much as $3 million that we've been able to use to spread across the 18 buildings that we have throughout the district. Billy Smith does not choose the projects. Billy Smith gets in the schools and sees what's going on, but it's the principals. My wonderful assistant, Emily Laughing, puts out a Google spreadsheet and principals go on and give their top three projects. We've got two principals that have participated in that and understand how that works. Some of them, even though you ask for three, you get 10. Because they're in the belief that if you don't ask, you're not going to get. So that's fine, too. We're going to look at the top three at each school. And then our maintenance teams, again, principals, they listen to their teachers and I listen to my maintenance guys because those are where the rubber meets the road. They're in those schools every day and they know much more about what they see every day as the needs as far as maintenance, deferred maintenance in the schools. So that's how we go about and then we go, once we get those, get that spreadsheet filled out, we give them a deadline, then we go about the task of putting numbers to each one of those projects. And then we prioritize and again, usually we try to do as many of the number one projects. I think principal last year at Midway Elementary said she want a whole new roof on the school. Understand that, that's a need, but that would take more money than we've got. So and then, and then we spread that out as much as we possibly can, again, making sure each school. We do try to paint at least a fourth of the school, of each of the schools. And we've got some newer schools that we haven't had to do that, so that's nice. But the older schools, we try to, you know, we might, in a middle school, we might take the sixth grade hall and the cafeteria. And then the next year, we do the seventh grade hall and the office area. And then the next year, the eighth grade hall and the gym related arts area. And always try to do some on the outside to make things, things look good. So that's kind of how the process works. Again, this is just, it may be a little more than the tip of the iceberg, but it's some of the things that we've done this past year and it's a team effort. And I want to thank y'all and I want to thank Dr. Goodwin and Brad for, when we have money, it's a wonderful thing because there are needs that we have. One of the big projects that we're working on, just so you know, that won't show up on here, we have HVAC, tons and tons of R22 freon HVACs. And if you don't know what that is, you can only buy R22 freon on the black market now. So we just did a big project replacing part of Lou Goff Elgin Middle School, Camden Middle School and Blaney and Lou Goff Elgin High School. And we will continue to chip away at that and get new units, put those, put in and try to keep from having to pay way too much to keep those units running. All right, we'll start with, we got, we were able to get three new activity buses last year, as you can see on the screen. And that, and we're going to try to do a couple of those, one or two of those every year and get our fleet back up to, we want our kids and our staff and our people, you know, our parents. When our buses come rolling in at some of these nice places that they go to and other places, we want them to be proud of what they ride up on and get off of. So we're working on doing that. Next slide, please. We were able this year for the Day of Champions. It was always kind of hard for parents and staff and board members to find the different teams. So Dr. Goodwin came up with the idea, let's get them all their own tents. And we were able to do that and I'm telling you, it was, it was really, really a great idea and it really, kids, parents, the people that put it on Camden Military, God bless them, thank them for all they do. And even board members were really appreciative and it just made it look so much nicer. And the kids could find their tents easily and get back to their teams. So that was a nice, nice thing. Next slide, please. We are working, ever since we built the new Camden Elementary, the new Watery Elementary, Lou Goff Elementary and North Central Elementary, they all got new shiny playgrounds with nice surfaces on them. So we have been trying to, little by little, again, by the way, kind of like the HVAC projects, get everybody up and even with everybody else on their playground equipment. This is Jackson's Schools and you can see that used to have bark and wood chips under it. And we went in and put new turf, the actual equipment was original to the school and did not need to be replaced. So we just, we don't just happily, just because we want all new, don't do it just because. That did not need to be replaced and that's money that could be saved. So we went in, that's the upper, I call that the upper kids, the older kids playground, next slide. That's, that's the younger kids playground. And that is so much nicer and cleaner and you ought to just see the kids. I tried to put the, when Blaney, they had a ribbon cutting and the kids were all ran out. I don't know who was happier, the aides and teachers or the kids? Because aides and teachers were running out, they wanted to play it on as much as the kids were. Next slide, please. This is at, I call it Wah because it's younger kids and every time I go there, they're crying. And they're happy, but they're sad, too, sometimes. But now they were happy this day when we were able to go in and redo their playground. This is all brand-new equipment, brand-new turf. They've even got a little stop, next slide, please. You can't see it over there, but this, they've got two different sections, but there's old tricycles. And those kids would rather race them tricycles around than breathe, I think. So there's a little stoplight over there so they can, like, it's almost like they can, you know, have little races around there and get back to the stoplight in time. So that's Watery Early Learning Academy. Next slide, please. This is at Blaney. This is the upper kids playground. Next slide, please. And this is, this is actually them playing on it the first day after they had the ribbon cutting. You see the adults having as much fun as the kids. And it was really, it really makes your heart feel good when you see, when you see that happen. And so we're blessed to be able to do that. We have left Pine Tree Hill, all of theirs to do. And we have part of Dobie's Mill. And I think that catches, that'll have them all even, boss. So we're going to try to do those this coming summer. Next slide, y'all, please feel free to ask questions anytime. We moved the new, the new Childfind Center area from where it was in a little place that was hard to find at CLC, out to ATech. It's not old ATech, it is the ATech. We don't have a new ATech, we have WTC. And so this is, this was one of the rooms, this is the old graphics art room. It's in Building B, the main building, the original building. We went in and tore out the carpet and, next slide, please. Repainted it, put down new carpet. You see that door down at the end, that goes into another room. So there's actually two rooms. There's, I think, six offices, two storage rooms and a central area for those folks. And so it was a major, major upgrade for them and they are so happy out there. So we are using, a lot of our, I call them our nomads, folks that are vitally important, our English as a Second Language teachers, our psychologists, people like that that don't really have a home anywhere. We're taking them and making them places, creating places for them out at ATech. So they've got a home and they can all collaborate together and then go out to the schools and do their thing. In the past, we've had to push them out to schools and, you know, they end up in places, they don't feel, they don't feel loved sometimes. And we want to make sure they feel loved because they do great stuff and they're important. Next slide, please. This was Easter break. We always seem to have wonderful presents that show up at Easter and Christmas and Thanksgiving. This was a, you can see the pipe there. This was a three-inch hot water line at the back hall of the main gym, P area at Lou Goff Elgin High School. It was found Thursday, burst underneath that floor, about two and a half feet down. We don't know how long it ran. Luckily, the baseball coach came in to change some laundry and found it and called one of our maintenance guys and he called me and we rushed up there and we got it cut off. But not before, next slide, please. It had got in that doorway, back it up one for me, Carrie. See that double door with the blue around it? That's, that goes out into the gym. That's that open, the water got underneath there, underneath the subfloor of your gym. If you ever have seen a gym floor be built, it's got, it's got a concrete slab. Then you put plywood with a two-by-four subfloor under it and then you go on top of it with that, with that maple. Well, that water got under there and it spread out about a third of that floor. And you can see where it just, a long time ago, some of you, I know Coach might remember when we did North Central High School's new gym. They let water get in there and it looked like a skateboard park in there. That stuff warped so bad. This wasn't quite as bad, but that maple and they couldn't get it laid down. So Tim was a big help. Mr. Hopkins was a big help with us and Brad talking with our insurance folks. And we're going to be able to replace that whole floor right now. Next slide, please. We, first, we had to come in, we had to have a company come in and get all the moisture out. You can see huge dehumidification going on for the whole gym to try to keep it from spreading and getting worse. Next slide. And then this is where we, just so you know, a little plug here for, oh, goddammit, Brazels. It's Roy's Cabinets. They, we couldn't find, this floor and Camden- They, we couldn't find, uh, this floor and, and Camden High's floor is a very thick maple. You can't find it anymore. Uh, we looked everywhere, we had every, uh, floor, gym floor specialist in South Carolina looking for it, couldn't find it. And happened, uh, the boss just mentioned, he said, have you talked with Roy? Or, or, or the folks down there at Roy's Cabinet Shop? I said, no, and I happened to run into him one morning at Coffee Club and asked him, said, "Oh, yeah, we can do anything." And they did. And they've got us about a hundred square foot of that stuff and made it. And so we were able to patch it. And we're able to keep, uh, these, this year's volleyball team seniors and, uh, uh, basketball seniors, uh, will be able to play on their home court. If we hadn't have been able to do that, we'd had to shut that gym down. They'd had to play somewhere else until we could get all the stuff in, that floor tore out. And they'd have missed their season. And because of, of, of their help, uh, and, and, uh, what they did, um, we were able to get that thing patched. It's safe. We're gonna wait till after basketball season. And as soon as, then we're gonna come in, rip everything out and put new floor because the insurance company, like I said with Tim's help, uh, the insurance company's gonna pay for us to redo it all. Uh, so, so that, that's, um, a, a bad thing's turning into a good thing as the Lord always works out for us. Next slide, please. Uh, Dobie's Mill, uh, I don't, how many of you been up there? But the, the main entrance was up at a crossroads. What was that road that comes in there? Anybody tell me what that, what is it? Kennedy comes in right to the front of the entrance of Dobie's Mill. And so it made it real congested there, especially in the mornings when people were trying to get to work to go to Columbia, uh, on, on, uh, Jackson, Fort Jackson, um, road there. And so it was getting worse and worse and the, and the Sheriff's Department was, was very concerned. And our new principal, she, she was, she, she had, uh, concerns about it. So, we were able to measure and look and see, and it's all about stacking and, and the amount of distance you got to get your people in and out. And we were able to, um, go in and, uh, change this down to, we moved the buses, like Pine Tree Hill, the buses come in the front and, and the parents come in the back. Well, we switched it like that. Now the buses go in the front at Dobie's Mill and the parents come in the back. But we needed about three hundred feet of extra stacking. So, we were able to, with our deferred maintenance money, to put three hundred and thirty feet of stacking and add it there. Uh, next slide, please. And you can see it runs back down behind the school where the old, uh, buses used to run. Now the cars go in and out there. And of course, the first weeks of school until after Labor Day and the dust settles, it was rather hectic, but it's working. And, and thank God it's been safe and, and everybody's doing what they're supposed to do and it's been a good thing. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we are, uh, upgrading our, our tracks. They're fifteen years old. And I will tell you, I'm proud of our schools and our maintenance folks because, uh, we had several national worldwide sellers of track come and, and, and bid, uh, on, on our tracks. We, we bid all three. Lugolf was the worst, uh, North Central's probably the second. So, so they'll be coming up next and, um, and then Camden High's, uh, 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 will be next. But, uh, they told us, they walked out there, uh, on all three of them and said, "These tracks are fifteen years old?" I said, "Yes, sir." They said, "Well, I'm gonna," there, there were four of them. They all said without, we've, we've never seen a fifteen-year-old track, these tracks look this good. Uh, so we've done a good job, but they were starting to delaminate. You know, they put asphalt down and then they put your, uh, your surface down and then they, they coat the surface. And, uh, it was starting to delaminate, come up. So, we would already made, uh, some spots, uh, patched up some areas. So, it was time, uh, to do it before it got so bad to where it was at safe. So, this, this was, uh, this was, uh, part of the beginning. They, they, uh, after they do this, they come in, they grind all the old asphalt up. Uh, they, um, uh, roll it down, pack it. And next slide, please. Put new asphalt down and then that's your new surface. Um, we had to hold up with the striping, uh, is gonna occur, I thought, this week. Uh, but when you have two middle schools, a ninth grade team, uh, JV team and a varsity team playing and the rec team playing, it's hard to figure out when you can put the stripes on there and not get them all messed up without that paint drying. So, we're working on that and that'll happen soon. But that's, that's looking really nice and we will be doing North Central's and, uh, Camden's next. Next slide, please. Uh, out at North Central, we, we got the, uh, old water tank, uh, painted and, uh, we fixed up the pump house. Uh, we will do midways, uh, this next time. They're the only two that have their own, uh, water storage, uh, tank and pump house, uh, because, uh, you know, we're on faucet water and they can't handle it. Uh, and, uh, this one actually serves for the, uh, fire protection at, uh, North Central High, North Central Elementary and North Central Middle. And, uh, we're working on getting the diamond NC and the logo put up on that, uh, put up on that tank. Uh, we've had a couple bids already and they've been kind of outrageous, so we're, we're still looking. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the front of, uh, Lu- North Central, uh, Middle School. Uh, it, it's a great facade. Uh, Charles actually, I think, helped design, designed that. And, and it had got all grown up and, and the, um, plaster, uh, stucco, uh, on the front had got bad. And, uh, we've got a great painting company here that, it always wins the bids, it seems, is, in Manson Painting. Uh, and, uh, they went in, he said he had a paint that he could put on there, uh, that would make it look like brand new and dag gummit if he didn't. They did a great job. And so that school almost looks like new when you go by it. Next slide, please. We also, uh, uh, pressure washed and cleaned their playground, uh, area and, and re-striped it. They now have a volleyball court and several basketball courts, uh, uh, out there that those kids play on every day. Next slide, please. Uh, Camden High School, we redid the front. Uh, that had got all grown up and, and just, you couldn't hardly see the front of the school. Uh, so we did that and it really looks nice. And we also, uh, seal coated and, uh, striped, uh, the, the, uh, the entrance way and, um, the, uh, parking lot, student parking lot in the front of the school. It looks really, really nice. If you haven't been able to see that, uh, please go by and take, take a look. Next slide, please. This is, uh, Camden High School, uh, athletic complex, the track field. We've always had, uh, issues with drainage on that track. Uh, and, um, we, we talked to, um, uh, some folks, uh, that said they had a, a, a kind of new, uh, and, and it's just, it's French drain. It, it's, it's, it's like a French drain, but they use a flat kind of, instead of the round pipe, they use a flat kind of, uh, of, of pipe type things, uh, plastic. And you can see where they ran it across. Uh, they look like really bad, uh, yard markers there, Coach, um, but they're not. Those are trenches that they put that system down and they run them down to the main drain. And we did that back in the spring and we, again, in that back left corner over there, always seemed to lay in water, just from, from watering the field. And it has stayed dry all summer, even back when we had the big rains, uh, earlier on in July. So, that, that, that's a big plus. Um, next slide, please. This is Camden Middle School, so this is some of the painting. Uh, don't know, uh, before and after here. Uh, you walk in there and it's a huge, wonderful, uh, cafeteria, but it just didn't have any pop. Uh, so, um, again, uh, they, uh, Dave Pryor with, uh, Manson Painting, uh, said, let, let's, let's look at this. So, he got with the principals and the principals came up with these ideas. And, uh, that, that's, uh, Camden Middle School's cafeteria, it looks brand new, uh, just because, just because we did some, some graphics and some, you know, stripes around there. Uh, the next one should be Lugolf Elgin, uh, Middle. Uh, again, just, just add some pop, uh, to the school. We also did this at Camden High last year in their cafeteria and it really made a difference. And thanks to, uh, uh, the folks out at, uh, ATEC at the graphics, uh, department, helped us, uh, come up with those school logos and, and put up there. Next slide, please. Uh, this is, uh, these are the last slides. This is a big project we're taking on. We've been working with Misha trying to get this done. This is at Lugolf Elgin High School and it's the old middle school, old high school. Uh, we're, we have extended the kitchen out. Uh, we, we've put these walls in and we're gonna go in and renovate that whole cafeteria. Next slide, please. This is kind of from the inside looking back out, uh, two doors and a roll-up door. Uh, they're getting all new serving lines, new equipment inside. We're taking out the big walk-in freezer, the old walk-in freezer, old walk-in cooler, putting in new ones. Uh, it's gonna be really, really nice. Uh, and, um, we're gonna be able to serve, uh, a lot, uh, better and a lot quicker, uh, for those students. A lot of times that's why they won't eat because it, it takes, takes them too long to, and so this will help us speed all that up. I think that's everything. Um, anything, any questions?
Thank you for everything you've shown us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate all the work that you're doing, um, for maintenance and so forth. And you mentioned several times North Central, uh, might be next.
It, and it will be next, yes, sir.
What's the time, y'all have a timeline on this?
Yes, sir. But, go ahead Dave, if you want to, boss.
As quick as we can, uh, get out of graduation. They, they, they get it the day after graduation.
Yeah, they.
One, at one point about money.
Yes, sir. Um, well, again, we're fortunate to have the money, uh, and the companies, the company that won the bid, remember we said we bid all three out? So, we don't have to go back out because this company said if we'll get them to PO ahead of, here in the next month, which I think we're gonna be able to do, they'll honor that price and prices won't go up on us. So, we've got that already into work, yes, sir.
And I have one simple little question.
Yes, sir.
Did Camden get them a special, we need special education tent? Y'all knew I was gonna ask that.
But if they haven't yet, we will get.
I appreciate all the tents, they look nice. I was there, but they're supposed to have games.
Yes, sir.
And Camden's tent was collapsed.
Yeah, yes, sir, it, it had.
They get a new one?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. They will definitely get a new.
You knew I'm gonna follow up on that when you bring it up.
Absolutely.
With deferred maintenance.
We can handle that one, Coach.
Okay. And one last thing, I, R, R twenty-two Freon.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned it's on the black market. Explain that a little bit to me.
Well, the, the government, EPA keeps changing the type of, of, uh, Freon that we have to use because of the ozone layer being affected and global warming and all that kind of thing. So, we're, we're about, since R twenty-two, we're getting ready to start our fifth different Freon.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so the next one is A four-two-ten-A, uh, is the next one that we're gonna have to start replacing. Um, but what we do is when we take these old ones out, our guys are smart enough, a lot smarter than me, uh, they said, they came to me and said, "We need to buy some tanks."
Okay.
And we take the old stuff out and we hold it. And we've been very blessed, we haven't bought any in, uh, in a year and a half.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your answers.
Just very quickly, I've been a part of the system a long time, as you know. And some of those lean years, when you get absolutely no deferred maintenance projects done at your school, I, I, I just wanna make, mention that it's admirable as to how you stretch it out. I've been one of those who always put in ten things when, you know, I can only get one or two, maybe three. Um, but I also applaud that a lot of what you did or what the maintenance department has done is necessary by way of infrastructure, safety, uh, improvements of the actual building facility structure. But it also, the aesthetics, uh, the pride factor. And I think that's worth mentioning, um, when you, and you have that pop. It's a, it's an attitude. Uh, it's, it's feeling good about where you're going, what you're walking into, what you're seeing when you get inside. So, uh, I hope we, we're able to continue doing that kind of thing. You know, the, obviously the essentials to make the buildings function properly, but also to make them look good.
Just, real quick, our three, our three priorities for our guys and, and when we're, we're doing things, it's safety and security first, instruction, does it, how does it affect? If it's affecting its instruction negatively, we need to take care of it. And then, and then comfort and aesthetics, uh, are third. And that's how we look at things and that's how we try to address them.
And I do have the opportunity, um, you know, I, I have somebody close to me who works under Billy. Um, the guys we have in our maintenance department are, are just superb. They're experts in their field, very professional and they're diligent. They stay on it. You don't hardly ever see them sitting around twiddling, they, they always got something to do. If they don't have a, a work order, they can do preventive maintenance, which I noticed that happens a lot as well. So, that's, that's huge to keep things operational.
It's very important.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Billy.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation, retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel and assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel? Proper motion by Ms. Furness, second by Mr. Cameron. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, and it's done.